Welcome to the Canyon City Planning Commission, Wednesday, January 22nd, 2020. 2020.
Nami.
I now call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was a test you passed.
You get a B. Cindy, please call roll.
Chairman Maloney.
Here.
Commissioner Clark.
Here.
Commissioner Clement.
Here.
Commissioner Ladue.
Here.
Commissioner Shagley.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Thank you. We have Brandon Smith there. Did we call his name for the roll, too?
He doesn't have it down, so I don't know. But I'm going to mark him down.
Okay, so Brandon is now our council representative. Welcome back.
Welcome back, thank you.
I now ask for approval of the minutes from the November 20th, 2019 Planning Commission. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a recommendation to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, are there any corrections or additions? Cindy, please call roll.
Chairman Maloney.
Aye.
Commissioner Clark.
Aye.
Commissioner Clement.
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue.
Aye.
Commissioner Shagley.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Okay, item... Hold on. So I don't have to have Patrick print this out for me. I've brought my laptop today, so bear with me. I suppose it's item 3A.
4A.
4A. Thank you, that's great. Well, I... Item 4A, an ordinance of the city of Canyon City amending the municipal code, repealing and reenacting Chapter 17 dot 17 concerning plan development zone district and plan development district plans. I now open this public hearing. The provisions of the city municipal code and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan of the city of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of the hearing as of set forth verbatim. May we please have a staff report, Patrick?
Certainly. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. And Councilmember Smith, I do apologize, you're about to see this presentation for the second time in an hour, so I'm sorry about that.
I don't get any apologies.
You said you were riveted, though.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, we are this evening presenting to you some proposed modifications to Title 7, Chapter 17, 17, particularly the PDD ordinance and requirements within the city's municipal code. Currently, based on this flow chart you're seeing here, what we do in terms of an overall land use process is move from the very general to the very specific. The very general starts at the zoning stage. The zoning in this case is what defines the rules of the property. What use can go there, what height and bulk limits can go there, what sort of discretionary uses are there. All of those details that we have in our code-defined zones for residential from RL to mobile home districts, for non-residential, C, CB, and I light industrial, as well as we've got some other kind of specialty districts. These are all Euclidian zone districts. It comes from a Supreme Court decision, Euclid, Ohio versus the Ambler Realty Company, which established when it went to the Supreme Court that zoning is a valid power for municipality to protect the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens. So with zoning in place, what happens next in the process is the subdivision of land. Now here again, we've got several options that someone can partake as part of our Title 16 subdivision processes. These again go from the very large in scale, the sketch and preliminary plat followed by final plan, to sort of an interim or medium stage that would be the minor subdivision, all the way down to the very simple, the subdivision exemption, which is a lot split or a lot merge or a boundary line adjustment between two lots. Now, all of these are of record and part of our Title 16 process. And these are all things that a developer could do concurrently if they wanted to, but most don't. And the reason for that is the conceptual issues that you're dealing with when you're zoning a property are going to be very different than a lot of the real-world engineering issues that you have to address when you're plating a property and having to figure out how you're going to make sure that it adequately drains, that it's got all the infrastructure that it needs for utilities, how you're going to put streets in there, if streets are going to be required to provide access to internal lots that you're creating. All of those are details that, because they are engineering-related, will cost a lot of money and a lot of developers prefer not to spend that money until they've got some sort of a guarantee under zoning that they can do what they want to do. So with that in mind, depending upon the... As I said, the city does not require that these be combined. Now, we also have a provision in our code for a planned development district zoning, Title 17, Chapter 17. This is what we call the integrated process right here. And this is a graphic that comes right out of that chapter of the zoning code. Right now, this process differs completely from our Euclidian zone districts and Title 16 subdivision processes in that it is... It requires a preliminary plan and preliminary plat as part of the zoning. It also requires both final subdivision and final site plans approved by planning area within a PDD. All of these must go through public hearing, and as you know, there are notice requirements for public hearing. It has to go to both Planning Commission and council. That adds time to an application. This is a very complicated and cumbersome process. In fact, I would even go so far as to say the way that it's written in some of the confusing language that it uses, it almost serves as a disincentive to it actually being used as a tool. What it is supposed to do is offer a form of customized zoning for an applicant and what they want to do with the property. The way it works is, okay, you can have the customized zoning elements, but you're going to have to go through this whole process that bears no resemblance to any kind of a subdivision process we currently have in Title 16. What we are recommending in Exhibit A to your staff report is a dramatically scaled-back version of the PDD regulations. This proposed ordinance would specify that PDD zone districts are about zoning only. There would be no subdivision component associated with this. And it would also specify that to be a zone district, to be a PDD zone, you would have to come complete with two items. A map or a development plan that indicates all of the internal land use areas that are going to be created under the zoning, and a guide or a set of written instructions that get to you, again, those height and bulk limitations, those use limitations. All of that specified, and in order to have zoning, you have to have both of those married together. That's what would go to a single hearing before Planning Commission and council for adoption. Now, these are the same type of PDD regulations that get used throughout the Denver metro area. In fact, these come largely from Parker, which is where I had my previous experience coming here, which is why I'm very comfortable recommending them. I know how well these work. The development community likes these because, again, these are customized regulations that they themselves choose based upon what they have observed in the marketplace. There is a demand for, primarily in residential, but also in certain kinds of commercial. Lifestyle centers versus more of a main street kind of approach. And you've seen these in various areas around the Denver area if you've ever gone up there and driven around. So this kind of customization is something that the development community likes because it responds to something that they know is the it-new thing right now. Now, any PDD zone district would then follow the city's Title 16 subdivision processes that we have now. There is no inbuilt subdivision process into this. We revert back to what the city would require for anyone in an R2 zone or a C general business district zone. That same subdivision process would be applicable here, too. And finally, what it does is simplify the entire PDD zoning that we've got currently in Chapter 17 point 17 from approximately, it should be 23 pages rather than 25, but down to about five pages. That's a very healthy deregulation of the code, and I think that's something that the city ought to be very proud of, that we've simplified the process, made it a bit more user-friendly, made it something that can actively respond to current development issues. And with that, that would... What we're going to recommend is that Planning Commission conduct the public hearing on this this evening, take any audience feedback that we might get. And at the conclusion of the public hearing, staff recommends that Planning Commission recommend City Council adopt the draft ordinance amending Chapter 17, 17 of the municipal code. And that would conclude my presentation. As always, I am happy to answer any questions that the Planning Commission may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the Planning Commission? Go ahead.
So I'm curious. Curious, do you know why it went to 23 pages? I mean, was there a story that caused us to go in that direction at one time?
I'm not entirely sure, so pardon me, I'm going to go into a little bit of speculation because I believe what happened in 17, 17 happened in the same way that what we have in Title 16 for subdivision processes happened. The city adopted, borrowed, language from the Colorado Division of Local Affairs as a model land use code. That's where we got Appendix A to Title 17 from, and that's why we have amended Title 16 a couple of times in the past year to make it a bit more tailored to the needs of Canyon City. I believe Title 17, or Chapter 17, 17, the PDD regulations, came from a similar source. Now, I can't say why someone would want to create something that is both zoning and subdivision, this sort of weird hybrid that we currently have. I believe zoning is zoning and subdivision is subdivision, and you don't necessarily need to intermingle the two.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, I guess it's crystal clear.
We were here. We heard part of the previous.
There was quite a lot of discussion in the vision meeting, but if I can explain what happened in that is we're in the process of redoing Titles 16 and 17, and this is the Band-Aid that's going to streamline the process for us to be more business-friendly until those titles are completed.
Sounds good to me.
It does.
All right, any comments from the audience? Hearing none. I'll close this public hearing. Now need a motion and a second for the request based on the staff report.
I move the Planning Commission recommend that the City Council approve the draft ordinance amending Chapter 17 point 17, simplifying the planned development district process.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark, do we have a second?
I second it.
Any further discussion? Cindy, please call roll.
Chairman Maloney.
Aye.
Commissioner Clark.
Aye.
Commissioner Clement.
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue.
Aye.
Commissioner Shagley.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Okay, fantastic. Item 4B. Okay, bear with me, I got to read this out, right? An ordinance of the city of Canyon City amending Section 3 dot 12 dot 030, 3 dot 12 dot 060, 3 dot 12 dot 200, 17 dot 08 dot 010, 17 dot 12 dot 065, 17 dot 12 dot 070, 17 dot 12 dot 075, 17 dot 12 dot 090, 17 dot 12 dot 110, 17 dot 12 dot 120, 17 dot 20 dot 085, and 17 dot 20 dot 127 of the city of Canyon City municipal code concerning minor operated businesses. I now open this public hearing. The provisions of the city municipal code and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan of the city of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of the hearing as of set forth verbatim. May we have a staff report, please, Patrick?
Certainly. So, the provisions of minor operated businesses, front yard lemonade stands, Girl Scouts going to set up to sell cookies, Boy Scouts sometimes have those pop, you know, the big drums of popcorn that you can buy. This has recently become an issue at the state, and in fact, some state legislation came out. Some of this affects the permitting requirements for such businesses. Some of this affects where these businesses can go, which is why this involves both Title III and Title 17. With that, since a lot of the work on this and research on this came from our city attorney, I will hand off to Catherine.
Yeah, so as Patrick mentioned in the last legislative session, this is actually like an issue that pops up usually in the summer. A lot of times, like, some kid wants to open a lemonade stand, and a city clerk will call and say, "Do they need a sales tax license?" And I'm thinking, "They're eight," and that's probably not a great idea. And so the legislature finally did something about it. And what the legislation does is it actually limits what a local government can require from a minor operated business, so a minor is anyone under 18. We can't require any type of licensing and permitting, so no sales tax license. So that's why you see sales tax, Title III is sales tax, so that's why you see some changes in there. And then the limitations are, under the state laws, they can't operate more than 84 days a calendar year, and that we can impose some limitations on maybe distances from, you know, certain businesses that might sell the same product or areas which we don't think it's appropriate to avoid, you know, the kid coming with his hot dog stand in front of the restaurant or bar or something like that, a competing business. And so we need to fix the code, obviously, to address this, to make sure that we're not requiring any permitting or anything to kind of get us... So it's actually a regulation for less regulation, if that makes any sense? And so the chain, what staff is proposing is that 84 days would be expanded to 180 days, so that's six months. You have a pretty long warm season here, so it makes a little more sense for that period to be longer. No minor operated businesses would be allowed in the C, CB, I, OPR, or the DR zone districts, so it would be in your residential, any mixed use or anything like that. So it wouldn't be downtown, it would just be in neighborhoods and things like that. So that's about it. I mean, I know there's a lot written here, but there's very few, like, major changes being made. So it's really to exempt this activity from any city regulation within those parameters. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman, I did have a question. One of the things I thought of during this process was, like, during Blossom Festival and stuff, there are small minor-owned businesses that operate downtown. Would that exclude them from that from this point on?
Yeah, I think we'd probably handle that through Blossom's permit when they come in and maybe deal with it. I don't know enough about Blossom's permitting process to know exactly how that's all handled, but...
The Blossom Festival tends to get one permit, and under that permit, all of the vendors who do business anywhere in a city park, anywhere setting up on Main Street, for example, they all operate under that banner permit.
Okay.
Same thing with Whitewater.
Yeah, I just didn't want to cut them out of that because it's a real busy time for them. It's a real active time.
Yeah, when you get that kind of a broad special event that involves, you know, multiple closures of streets and venues in various city parks and whatnot, that tends to be, the organizers of the event have one negotiation with the city for all of the things they're going to need the city to provide, and they get one permit under which all of the vendors who are going to be setting up operate under the purview of that vendor permit license that they get.
So that would, I'm sorry...
Well, just let me tail off of that, then. If they're not related to the Blossom Festival, though, is that going to occur tail, then?
Well, it's prohibited in those districts, so...
So we could add language to address that when they're part of a greater permitted festival or event. Because, I mean, what Patrick's describing is Blossom comes in, and they're kind of the umbrella organization, so everybody comes in under them. So they don't have to be directly related to Blossom, but if they're operating as part of that event, we would consider them under that umbrella. But we can add language in there with that prohibition that says, you know, unless they're part of a greater permitted event, so it kind of covers that situation, so there's no confusion.
Okay, thank you.
Because it's not intended, anyway. To answer your question, it's not meant to exclude them from us, so...
So they could operate in a public park, because this particular ordinance, whatever precludes them from operating in a public park. And Blossom, obviously, is in Centennial and Veterans and Whitewater and all that. So the umbrella, what you're talking about, would actually take precedence over this ordinance?
Yeah, but only if they were...
If they're part of that umbrella. So if they're over here saying, "Oh, Blossom's coming in, but I don't have that particular Blossom umbrella," they're still operating over here. They would be out of...
Yeah.
For the most part, I think that Blossom Committee controls the vendors, so they would kind of police their own event, unless they were selling lemonade on Macon to people.
That kind of brings up another thing, so if this is an ordinance, who's going to go up and... I don't want to say, yeah, I don't want to say arrest the children, but who's going to enforce the ordinance and what is going to be the fine? And I'm assuming that the parents are going to be held accountable for this eight-year-old child breaking the law.
Well, so, one, the age of culpability in Colorado is 10, so no eight-year-olds. But, you know, it's code enforcement, ultimately, it's going to be the police department. I don't think we'll see a lot of tickets for lemonade stands, but there might be some, you know, warnings and just discussions about what's allowed and what's not. That's would be my expectation, so...
Well, this seemed pretty cut and dry, so that's why I'm going more to a detail of it. I mean, it's so short, you got to do something. So here's my second question. Say a 12-year-old has an online account, an Etsy or eBay or something like that. Is that... So that doesn't matter. Any kind of online internet business is not included in this at all?
No, these are physical...
Physical lemonade stands.
Yes, physical selling, person-to-person, face-to-face selling, yeah.
Okay, I have a scenario that I would like to ask about. So in a small town where I'm from in Kansas, every summer when I go back, I notice this adorable little trailer kind of thing that daddy made, and the two teenage girls are doing very, very well, making their way for college in their whole summertime, selling their snow cones or lemonade and everything. They're on the highway right out of the city limits, per se, as the street goes down this Kansas town. Now, they have a permanent, so to speak, fixture. It's on wheels, it can be pulled back, it can be put up front. And I believe it's on like a vacant car wash place right now. I'm seeing this, the entrepreneurial feeling of me being 17 years of age or so, I think that's a pretty cool thing, you know, now that I'm getting the blessing. Can you just see those popping up like crazy then, something like that, a permanent little stand? When you see the money that's available, because they make a business, the snow cone business.
I don't want to say it won't happen. It definitely could. I mean, anything's possible.
I think it's great.
But if it's outside the city, it's outside the city.
Well, I think, I'm just assuming that you're not...
It's a drive-through. I mean, it's literally a little drive-through, very convenient.
Well, yeah, I mean, if it was in the county, that's not our problem. But if it were in the city and operating like that, I mean, you know, I don't, you know, there's 180-day limit, so they'd have to close down for half the year.
Well, they would because of, well, a child at school, and of course, these college kids do.
Yeah. So I think it would kind of depend on the facts of whether or not we would, you know, it would depend on where it's occurring and that kind of thing. Because of the way that this is limited to really residential neighborhoods, parking a permanent structure somewhere is going to cause, probably, it's going to implicate a few more issues other than just the minor business. My guess is it's probably not going to be allowed under some other provision of the code regarding trailers and that kind of thing, so there's going to be some other zoning issues. So I think in Canyon, that's unlikely to happen. But it's...
So keep it simple.
Yeah, that's certainly something we can keep in the back of our minds and watch out for to happen, but because those vacant lots in Canyon have a tendency to be the zones that this isn't permitted in, I don't see that coming up. And I don't, I didn't pick the zones, and maybe Patrick had that in the back of his head when he was thinking about it. He doesn't want...
We do have a mobile food truck and cart permitting process. It's fairly simple. I think it's $25 a year for the permit, something like that. And it allows you, as a mobile vendor, to, you know, take your food truck if you're selling hot dogs or you're selling fish and chips, or Councilmember Dennehy has pizza, wood-fired pizza that you can get. You can set up in any private parking lot, as long as you have the property owner's permission to be there. You can set up in a right-of-way. And you can also go and set up in a park, but you have to get a park permit to do that. And that's through, obviously, the Parks Department that would evaluate that, and to the extent that they want to put restrictions on that, that's entirely up to them. So I would assume if we're going to have a minor that wants to do like a food truck or food cart, you know, push cart or something, maybe they're selling ice cream or whatnot, I think it would probably be a similar permitting process for them to be able to operate in a commercial area.
Yeah, because since this ordinance doesn't allow them, it's just flat-out prohibited, with some exceptions that we talked about earlier, they're going to fall under what other permitting processes are out there, whether it's a food truck or, you know, as Patrick mentioned in the staff report, we're not just talking about lemonade and food, so they could be selling other things, so it's going to fall under potentially other regulations.
I have one more question. You mentioned this is, it's going to go up to 180 days. Is there a start/stop point? So do they have to not get a permit, but do they have to notify somebody? Or is this just kind of a, it's been about 180 days, I'm not going to sell hot dogs tomorrow?
That's a good question.
It's based upon just observation right now. Because we're not allowed to permit them, we can't really, like, make them come in and tell us, so it's going to be observation, and I recognize that could be difficult.
It could be 185 days, then.
It could. And if that becomes an issue, if we have a lot of 250-day situations, then we may have to come back and sort that out some way. But I think right now, you know, we just want to conform to the law and see how it goes.
I hope there's a lot out there.
We have, at a staff level, we have not observed that minor-operated businesses are creating some big conundrum that the city has got to resolve. We're doing this primarily because we want to make sure that our regulations are not in conflict with this new state bill.
Okay.
So the purpose was, was so that people weren't harassing minors for permits when they wanted to do stuff.
Right.
That's the whole purpose.
Correct.
Any other questions? No. All right. Close this public hearing.
You didn't ask the audience.
What's that?
You didn't ask the audience.
Yeah, they're quiet. Okay. Now call for a motion and a second for a recommendation to City Council based on the staff report.
Yes, Chairman Maloney, I move the Planning Commission recommend that the City Council approve the draft ordinance amending Title 17 to make it compliant with Senate Bill 103 pertaining to minor operated businesses.
And I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Cindy, please call roll.
Chairman Maloney.
Aye.
Commissioner Clark.
Aye.
Commissioner Clement.
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue.
Aye.
Commissioner Shagley.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Okay, that's it. Anybody have anything else for tonight? First meeting of 2020. Pretty mellow. Successful. Deal.
So I believe we currently have two applicants to fill the vacancy created by Councilmember Smith's...
Yeah, that guy.
Getting kicked upstairs, pardon the language. So I believe council's plan is they are probably going to be conducting interviews with these two candidates, so hopefully by next month, we may have a new Council, a new Planning Commission member.
Great. So by our February meeting, we may have someone?
Correct.
If, do we have anything on the calendar yet?
Not at present, but stay tuned.
Okay. All right, thank you, everyone. We're adjourned.